Time is 6:00 PM. The Council of the City of Dennison will now convene into regular session. Well, I'm about to get to the invocation, but I'm somewhat confused on the two names. I know we have Pastor Cattell here and Stephen Kelly.
I'm filling in for Stephen this evening.
See, that was confusing. I saw you. We'll pray with everybody.
All right. You ready for me? Father, do indeed. Thank you for this day that you've given to us. Thank you for the lives that you bless us with and the talents and abilities that you give each one of us. Father, thank you for this group of men and women and for their unique gifts and talents that you have blessed them with. And thank you so much for their willingness to serve this town and to serve you. And we pray a blessing upon each one of them. Father, give them a spirit of wisdom and discernment. And Father, we pray that we may always give thanks to you for all the good gifts that you pour down upon us. We thank you for your Son, Jesus Christ, for the example that he left for us and for the sacrifice that he made on our behalf. That's in his name that we pray. Amen.
Ledge of the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have two proclamations this evening, and so I'll ask Don Riddle if he'll come forward. Don Riddle is the CFO of the Texoma Community Center. Whereas citizens of Dennison recognize the vital role -- oh, no, sorry. Just wait till we get down. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being. And whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives. Whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of the mental health conditions. Whereas a strong body of research that supports specific tools that all Americans can use to better handle challenges. Whereas the mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation. And whereas with early and effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. Now therefore, I, Jared Johnson, as Mayor of the City of Dennison, do hereby proclaim May 2015 as Mental Health Awareness Month in the City of Dennison. I encourage all citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, to recommit ourselves in this community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health issues for our citizens.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
One other one, this Sunny Mackey and her team here. Sunny, if you'll introduce your team, because these are --
This is Chip Egger, Dordie Smith, and Betty Riches.
And everybody works at the pool?
Yes.
Whereas citizens of Dennison recognize the vital role that swimming and aquatic-related activities relate to good physical health. And whereas the citizens of Dennison understand the central role that education regarding the topic of water safety plays a huge role in preventing drowning and recreational water-related injuries. Whereas the City of Dennison is aware of the contributions made by the recreational water industry, as represented by multiple associations and professionals. And whereas the citizens of Dennison recognize the ongoing efforts and commitments to educate the public on pool and spa safety issues and initiatives by the pool, spa, water park, and recreation industries. And whereas the citizens of Dennison understand the vital importance of communicating water safety rules and programs to families and individuals of all ages. Now therefore, I, Jared Johnson, as Mayor of the City of Dennison, do hereby proclaim May 2015 as National Water Safety Month and encourage all citizens to appreciate these professionals. Agenda item number three, the consent agenda, and we will be moving the budget amendments out of consent. I'm going to go separate pieces with the exception of that. Motion.
Move for approval with the exception of the legislative amendment.
Second. Have a motion from Councilmember Goss, second from Councilmember Beck, all in favor, I say aye. Pose like a sign. Motion carries at this point. We'll go to agenda item 3G budget amendments.
Mayor and members of the council, you have before you a report, and we want to hold a discussion, take action on the relevant budget amendments for the first half of this year 2015. What you're receiving in your packet had to do with two vehicles. One was damaged due to a motor vehicle accident and one was damaged as a result of a fire. The other amendment that you're seeing on your spreadsheet is to the Water Sewer Operating Fund, which we discussed in the previous council meeting. The reason we pulled this from the agenda, from the consent agenda is we'd like to add an additional amendment to that, and I'll let Mr. Hannah speak to that.
Thank you, Renee. Mayor and council, I was notified by the fire department that they've worked with several roof vendors to identify the cause of a leak. They identified the cause of a leak in the fire department and need it repaired. The roofing system on that building is a petroleum product with gravel. I forget, I don't know the official tile for that, but it's a gravel roof. And what several, all the roofing companies are recommending is that remove all of that grime down to the base layer and put on a TPO, which is what we did at City Hall that finally stopped the leaks we had here. We anticipate the cost of that to be, it should be under the $50,000 cap. Since it wasn't a budget expense, and we're doing this anyways, we want to go ahead and take the opportunity to formally amend the budget to do that. I would suggest, after Renee's consultation, that this come out of the Ready Day Fund or the General Fund Reserves. Either one is an appropriate account. And then we would take those funds and put them into our building maintenance actual line of account. Renee, if I said that wrong, then correct me, please.
Please stand up correctly.
And that's which fire department, which state?
This is Central State.
Yes, sir.
I would, I guess defer to Renee, Mr. Hannah on the location. I think if we're, if we have a surplus budget, which it looks like we are right now, especially in light of lower than budgeting gas prices, my preference would be taking out of the General Fund Reserves as opposed to Ready Day Fund, that's four other things.
I would agree with Mayor on that. And I like that we're consistent with not patching the situation, because those roofs, those old roofs are terrible to maintain. So I'm glad we're going to put a permanent fix on with the TPO roof. I think that's a good decision.
What roof did we do on the police station?
We used a John Mansfield product. Basically, you have multiple layers of asphalt sheets. It is a traditional roofing method that was existing on that building before, and they just removed all the layers, all the different layers throughout the years and put a new one down. Frankly, because of the issues we've had with that roof, probably we would look at using TPOs in the future. This one has performed excellently. And if we could walk back and make that decision again, I'd probably look at doing a TPO roof.
Will this be on bid, bid out to bidders on it, or is it something that's going to be --
We're going to receive sealed, we're going to receive not sealed bids, but call quotes. The dollar amount is underneath the amount for competitive sealed bids. However, our purchasing policy requires us to give you quotes.
I do recall we had a couple of bidders on the police station, and one of them was a little higher, got this and this roof. So I think we could call a little bit better.
If we go on the TPO solution, the cost would have been substantially less than we paid to.
Thank you.
Motion.
So we're making a motion to accept the budget amendments, including the fire station roof? Do we include an amount on that, or just --
I don't, I don't want to set the amount, probably because we're still getting bids.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Yeah. Okay. So I'm making a motion to approve the budget amendments, including the fire station roof.
Second.
Have a motion from Councilman Hanley, second from Councilman Beck, all in favor, I say aye. Pose like a sign. Motion carries. Agenda item 4, public hearings for unsafe structures.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Now we have five structures up for demolition. On February 25th, 2015, Roger Riddle, the owner of 929 West Chestnut, was given notice of violation to repair or demolish the structure. The owner has failed to comply with the notice. This structure is unsafe and a potential fire hazard. Has a lot of roof damage. It's open, so it's an attractive nuisance. On February 25th, 2015, Stephen Keith Douglas, the owner of 1523 West Walker, was given notice of violation to repair or demolish the structure. The owner has failed to comply. The structure is unsafe and a potential fire hazard. This one has some roof problems. Foundation is failing on the northeast portion of this property. It's hard to get a picture of that because it's property so little of its own. We have some roof damage. On February 25th, 2015, Eric M. Swinson and Sammy J. Horton, the owners of 1100 West A, were given notice of violation to repair or demolish the structure. The owners have failed to comply with the notice, and the structure is unsafe and a potential fire hazard. This one is open, has some foundation problems, a lot of other problems. On February 24th, 2015, Chris Vickery, Renee Vickery, Independent Bank, and Lone Star Management, the owners of 212 Sharon Circle, were given notice of violation to repair or demolish the structure. The owners have failed to comply with the notice, and this structure is unsafe and a potential fire hazard. This house, or this piece, this structure, Saltwood House, has foundation issues, roof issues. It's open. On February 24th, 2015, Ted Butterfield and Nancy Friesen, the owners of 930 South Myrick, were given notice of violation to repair or demolish the structure. The owners have failed to comply with the notice. The structure is unsafe and a potential fire hazard. This property has some problems with the foundation, with the porch covers, with the porch itself. This is the rear portion of it. These are just some photos of the cracking of the building. A record of the violations, notices, and unsafe conditions of these properties are on file in the building and code enforcement departments. I'm asking council to declare these structures as statue structures and order the removal of them within 10 days after notice of council's decision.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to any of these properties? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council?
Betty, the only, on that 29 West Chestnut, that's the only one to me. We've, you know, we've looked at a number of these over the, over meetings, and generally, they all look without a doubt that they're a problem. This one is the only one to me that I look at and I go, man, is this a house we really need to tear down? I mean, I'm just struggling with that one, and I don't know.
And I understand. I do, I certainly do understand that. And there has been some interest in this property, and there has been a gentleman that has tried everything he could possibly do to contact the owners. We've tried helping too, work with trying to find them, which he found one of them. But evidently, this property, they think that this property belongs to the city. This guy that is the listed owner, and that they don't have anything to do with it. They've not paid their taxes on it in five years. I've talked to the tax office a couple of times, including last year, trying to find out when they might send this to sheriff's sale so that someone would buy it. Well, they told me last year that it was going to go sheriff's sale in February, which it didn't. So then I called them and asked them when it was going to go to sheriff's sale, and they said they don't know. So we felt like we needed to do something to move forward with this piece of property, because it is just setting there falling apart.
But it meets the criteria of honesty.
Yes, right.
It is unfortunate, because that's, that's nice, that could be a nice, you know, addition to the community. Okay.
Is there not another avenue we can go with this house? Because I have a sense, this appears to be a appeared being structure. What's, what's condition of the slab?
Really, the slab is, the foundation appears to be in pretty good shape. What has happened with this house is that, you know, the roof has been left for so long and so much water damage.
So is there another avenue we can go as far as a sheriff's sale? I mean, is there a way to, what, what controls that?
We can't, we can't just take the property if it's abandoned. And so our recourse is fairly limited from that standpoint. We could, we could work, continue trying to work with the sheriff, with the tax office to do a sheriff's sale on the property from a tax law standpoint. But again, I don't think, I don't believe we can compel them to do that. It's really their, their wheelhouse. We have, I have worked with an insurance agent who knows the owner for two years on trying to get them to work with the city to make something happen with this. Because over the four years that I've been here, this house has continued to decline. The roof really wasn't in all that bad a condition when I first arrived, but it needed some attention. It had a tarp on it that I guess was trying to get the water out. Yeah. Now the tarp is gone, and there's holes in the roofs, and you've seen the picture. We're kind of at an impasse. Either we need to live with it and wait for the sheriff's office to pursue the sheriff, just the tax office to pursue the sheriff's sale, or we do this and be more proactive. It's really a policy, a policy decision for council. I don't know if you're aware of any opportunities that we could pursue, but I just don't.
No, there aren't.
Would it be inappropriate to speak to the sheriff's department to find out what their anticipated plans are for this property?
It's really the tax office.
But I hate to see the structure go down over.
What I would recommend is we do this, is that part of the action that council takes tonight on this particular property, is the balance of council's wisdom to do this, to define that and to try to work with the tax office to pursue a sheriff's sale, is that we write a letter that has the signatures of the banker on it, encouraging that the tax office pursue a sheriff's sale on this property. If that's the move, we can do that. And then pursue with the demolition nonetheless. At some point in time, you invite trouble by having abandoned houses like this in your neighborhood and your community. And we've done an excellent job, I think, to be proactive in some of this. I just don't want to see some, some things creep into our neighborhoods.
I don't know what, I don't know what the pledge of counsel would be, but to further that, so what would, what would a motion look like that was, that you're, how would we pursue with demolition and send, send a letter to the county tax office?
I think the council could just direct staff to have a, have a letter written for the mayor's signature that would encourage the tax office to take this to sheriff's sale as quickly as possible, to identify a date certain, and do that. And barring their unwillingness or inability to do that, we can do a move forward with demolition.
So, okay, so the staff would understand, we give that time to, for them to respond, or?
Yep.
So you're recommending we leave it on the demolition list?
Yes.
How long can we delay demolition in this? If we move, move to leaving it on the list, is there, are we under any kind of time constraints?
Your word of time constraint? Captain Rowley, your, your question is, I don't want to stay on there long enough for us to get a reasonable time.
Right, I don't want to run out of time trying to salvage a property.
Betty, how many are on the list, or how many are we, have we, has council already determined danger structure, structured, and it's on the demolition list to be?
I think right now I have that, I have that with me, but I think that we currently have 29 that still need to be torn down.
In front of these?
In front of all these.
Okay.
Yes. So it's, we have a lot.
So the time cycle for property, once we validate a property, are we six months out for demolition typically?
Well, we're kind of behind right now a little bit, but that's due to all the rain that we've had. So I know that they did tear a structure down today, but now it's going to start raining again. So, but normally, once they go through council, then they're handed off after we send out another notice. You know, they get another 10-day notice afterwards. And we get all the, make sure that all the utilities are disconnected. But sometimes that takes 30 days for the utility companies to actually disconnect their services that may still be there. So it's just, you know, it depends on those circumstances. But usually, within a month from leaving here, they are handed off to be torn down.
So basically, what we're going to be able to do is start that process, pursue the, with the tax assets, the possibility of sheriff's sale, and then the discretion of the city manager is before, needs to happen before it gets on your staff's list.
Okay. Someone have a motion?
So we're not going to amend the motion, we're just going to pursue with demolitions on?
With, with the letter.
Yeah.
And again, Bruce is the guy, Bruce, you know, he's an elected official too, so I can call him.
Yeah.
You know, from that perspective, we'll send a letter and just say, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we move forward with these demolitions with the letter going out for try to salvage this property.
Save that motion. Have a motion. Councilmember Rowley, second from Councilman Hanley, all in favor, I say aye. Pose like a sign. Motion carries. Agenda item 4B, public hearing on 419 West Crawford.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Gay Ream. It's my first opportunity to present before you tonight, so keeping that in mind, please go easy on me.
Welcome to Jensen.
Item before you is a request for a change of zoning. The applicant is the American Legion. There's no response in the notification from the adjacent property owners. And the land use plan supports the zoning change, so the item following this applicant has a desire to post bingo at the location, so zoning change would accommodate that request as well as the following item, the conditional use.
Okay, so the first item here is the taking the zoning change from multifamily in one of the central area districts.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this agenda item? Being that the public hearing is closed, I know we have Jackie Jenkins from the Legion here. Did you want to speak?
If I could, please. Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name is Jackie Jenkins. I'm the commander in post 62. Our mission statement, we're veterans, have to be other veterans in our community. Presently, we donate to the, on an annual basis, to the homeless shelter, Meals on Wheels, the BASH program, which is the National Homeless Veterans Program. Each Christmas, we adopt families, make sure the children have a Christmas. Last month, we brought a convention in here, first time in 12 years. It's brought a lot of revenue into the City of Dennison. Presently, the only place for bingo is the BMW. They only do it two nights a week. We're proposing three nights opposite of thursdays, which will allow those citizens of Dennison to have another place to go, because presently, they all go back over to Sherman to play bingo. And I just feel like we need to keep our money here. Thank you.
All right, so again, I'll action, maybe we're just taking action on the zoning change? Motion of council?
Move for approval?
Have a motion from Councilmember Goss, second from Councilmember Rowley, all in favor, I say aye. Pose like a sign. Motion carries. Agenda item 4C, public hearing on initial use permit for bingo at 419 West Crawford. No further comments. No other comments. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to the conditional use permit of this property? I heard from Mr. Jenkins earlier. There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council? What nights were y'all looking at, what nights are currently the other organization doing, and what nights are you looking at?
Currently, right now, the BMW is holding on Tuesday and Saturday. We are asking for Monday, Wednesday, and Sunday to give us a five-day coverage for the city.
Thank you. Mayor, move to approve.
Motion from Councilman Beck, second from Councilman Hanley, all in favor, I say aye. Pose like a sign. Motion carries. Agenda item 4D, public hearing on change of zoning for 830 West Crawford Street.
Yes, sir. This location was previously zoned retail, and the applicant prefers to change the zoning to residential. The land use plan supports the change. And have you answered any questions?
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. It really is, though it makes a lot of sense for this property.
Motion. I'll still do approve.
Second. Motion from Councilmember Rowley, second from Councilman Hanley, all in favor, I say aye. Pose like a sign. Motion carries. Agenda item 4E, public hearing on 1000 Martin Luther King Street.
Yes, sir. This location, the property was previously in office. The applicant wishes to convert to residential use for rental purposes.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this agenda item? And just for clarity, is the address of the property 1000 Martin Luther King or 1012?
I currently reside at 1000, and I also own the property at 1012.
Okay, so which one are we zoning? Did we get it posted correctly?
1012.
Okay, so I think it's posted 1000. Is there going to be a problem with the council?
Let me go back and look at the agenda here.
1000 was rezoned in December a year ago.
That's a problem.
That's wrong.
Okay, so we really can't even speak to this. So Mr. Fulton, apologize, we've got it posted incorrectly, and so we can't take hearing on your item today. We will have it on the next agenda. Is there a problem for what you're hoping to do?
No, currently, the structure is being restored. Needs some foundation repair, got it to be occupied, so.
I think I'm looking at the application, and I can see what happened. The mailing address is 1000, the property in question is 1012. Right, so it's the mailing address.
I understand. But again, we can't even take hearing on it tonight. Apologize.
It does look like, I don't know if this will change it, but the notices of resentment of property owners, the adjacent owners, does say 1012, but the agenda says valid.
Yeah, unfortunately, that doesn't make a difference.
Our apologies, sir. Our apologies, sir. So we'll, no action taken on that item, we move to the next agenda. Agenda item four F, public hearing on Gateway Village. Mr. Rex, who wants to speak to that?
Gabe is gonna do it, I'm here for questions as well.
Yes, sir. Applicant requests only change to plan development. As mentioned, part of the Gateway Village development would include mixed uses, including senior living, retail and medical and office type facilities. At the P and C meeting, the twenty-third, there were some inquiries from adjacent property owners, mostly questions as to whether their property was being rezoned and their property was not. But have any similar questions?
Gabe or Joe, either one, I guess really for the audience, can you kind of from a high level talk about why plan development's important? In a project like this, as opposed to having five different separate zoning like we did have, to come under one PD, and what that really means for the community and the development?
Sure, a couple of things. First is that a PD or plan development allows for a cohesive development that coordinates, not just from a design standpoint, but from a regulation standpoint. So, you know, this is all, there's gonna be a lot of different uses in this development, but there, there's still a general idea and vision that we want to tie this development all in together, make it feel the same, and feel like it developed at the same time, and have similar, similar themes. And so the PD allows us to do that. The other thing is, is from the regulation standpoint, the PD provides some flexibility in terms of zoning regulations on setbacks and appearance and different things. And in this case, it's actually allowing us to raise the bar on the appearance, so that, again, we want to create a cohesive development that has real high quality standards from an appearance standpoint. So those are a couple ideas for what the, what the PD does. Certainly, it could be rezoned to, you know, like you said, five different zones, but that removes from the city the ability to require those good standards for, for a cohesive development. So, this is a win-win situation for the city, for sure.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone here wishing to speak to this agenda? You drove all this way. Our good friend, Mr. Bob Roder. Name and address, please, for the record.
Mayor and members of the City Council, I'm Bob Roder, seventeen-hundred Redbud, Suite three-hundred in McKinney, Texas, seven-five oh-six-nine. Here on behalf of the owner and the applicant, TPJ Properties. This zoning case before you has been in the making for over a year. We've worked very closely with your staff, all of whom have been most helpful in the process. As Mr. Rex indicated, this is a unique animal, it's over seven hundred acres, it's located at the gateway to your city. And so the goal here, from the owner's perspective, was to make this a special place. A place that could take advantage of modern development trends. A place that would take advantage of the best that your zoning ordinance has to offer, and I think we added to that some additional standards. This is a complicated document, we call it a pattern book, and a lot of what the regulations talk to in this are expressed in pictures as well as words, and that's why we use the term pattern book. But I think it's a document that is one that the city of Denison will find works well for this development. It kind of gives a flexibility to both the city and the owner to come out with an extremely good project over a long period of time, because this will develop in increments or in phases. Can you stop there, Mayor, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have, with the question of favorable approval.
Thank you, Bob. Any questions for Mr. Roder? Is there anyone else here wishing to speak to this agenda? There being none, the public hearing is closed, discussion, motion for Council?
Mayor, move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Councilman Beck, second, from Councilmember Goddard, all in favor, by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Agenda item five A, set the equipment lease agreement with this now Animal Welfare Group.
Mayor, from the Council, you have in fact proposed a lease agreement with this and the Animal Welfare Group and the city of Denison. With the tremendous efforts of fundraisers, voluntary and foundation foundations, the Animal Welfare Group raised thirty-five thousand dollars for the adoption trailer, which is certainly a tremendous achievement. They've worked hard and partnered with us to help balance adoptions with our control ordinance for the betterment of the community. The lease agreement is somewhat unique in that the adoption trailer is being gifted to us so that we can take ownership with the maintenance and insurance costs, lease costs are very minimal per year. Staff feels that this agreement is in the best interest of our citizens so that our partnership continues to grow, and at the same time, protect this valuable investment that they've made with the community. Stephanie Phillips is here tonight with some of the other group members, and I think she had a couple of comments.
Good evening, Council. This is my first time speaking in Council ever, too, so go easy on me. I just want to recognize Robert Hannah from Rich Collins End. They've been tremendous partners with us in this endeavor. They've helped us every step of the way, and we're excited to continue our work with the cooperation of the Council and the staff. So if you guys have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer those for you, too.
Thank you. I, it was not eighteen months ago, eighteen, twenty months ago, that Councilman Hanley and I had a, had a conversation with some members of your group before you really were a full-fledged group, and I just can't say enough of, I guess, gratitude and how impressed we are with the work that y'all put into that period of time. The numbers are in that, and I want to, we have one of these that we can give Michael as well, one of these, the newspaper.
Yeah, I can make up a copy.
Specifically noted on page two of the animals that are being euthanized. Because of the efforts of this group, the euthanization rate has gone from seventy-eight percent to fifty-two percent of the animals that arrived there. And that's, that's what it's about. You know, that's what that group's mission is. And when you, when you deal with such a sensitive topic, emotions come out, sometimes not always rational thinking comes out. And that's never been the case with y'all. Y'all understand, we're just trying to do the right thing for the community, the right thing for these animals, understanding the natural estrates of everyone involved, and it's made a huge difference. I mean, the proof is in the stats. So, I'm thrilled that y'all were able to raise the money for the trailer and that you continue to work. You know, a lot of people have passion, a lot of people have heart, a lot of people are great volunteers, but they can't lead. They can't take their project, their vision for something that was there eighteen months ago to now and come up with something that works. Again, I just want to applaud your group.
Thank you very much.
For, for all that.
Any questions? Thank you.
Motion for Council?
I'll make motion to approve, Mayor.
That's motion from Councilman Hanley, second from Councilman Beck, all in favor, by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. The Council will now go into executive session, according to chapter five-five-one, the case of here, to talk about how to voteation and settlement of same, also to discuss appointment of the city manager, according to chapter five-five-one, that's the section four, and also according to chapter five-five-one, that's rule seven, to talk about how high and low incentives and the economy. Time is six-thirty-nine, and we're going to executive session.